Okay, I'll call the Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022, 4:00 PM. Board of Selectmen meeting to order. The meeting is being taped by Area 58 and being simulcast out on Zoom. We have a slight change to the agenda. We're going to go into executive session after the Pledge of Allegiance. With that noted, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're gonna run into executive session real quick to meet.
Okay.
All right, we just gotta take the vote, so one second. Is there a motion to go into executive session, discuss the 12 taxable inhabitants of the town of Halifax versus the town of Halifax, to move to executive session as discussing strategy with respect to litigation? An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and the Chair does so declare so.
So moved.
Ashley?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, so to recap, so the beautification committee is requesting to use the Great Hall for the vendor fair. And Scott Materna stated in an email that he would be glad, and I didn't make a copy for everybody, but I figured.
Little baby writing.
That he would be glad to do it for the town. There wouldn't be any charge, so you can see that there.
Okay.
And then we have a proposed flyer. Of course, this is just proposed because we haven't gone over it yet. We're gonna add different things and have a meeting tomorrow. If you guys approve this, we're gonna get set forth on getting vendors and things of that nature. You know, like I started to say before, like things being remade from things and taking old wood and crafting that, filters, blah, 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 blah. Anything that's gonna promote saving the earth, making it beautiful, less trash.
Are you gonna have adequate room up there for a number of vendors?
Right, so that's my next thing. So we were thinking about if we started to fill upstairs, maybe allowing some tents to go outside, like pop-up tents, crafters having their own thing outside. Could we do that out here if we filled upstairs? Would that be allowed?
Yeah, just be careful of the weather. Because you don't want to put too many and then have it rain and be stuck with everybody who's supposed to be outside, not having anywhere to go in.
It'd be unfair to the marketers outside in the rain. People inside have an advantage.
Right, so maybe what we would do is be sure that they knew that the possibility of rain and then the pop-up tents and stuff. And then what would happen if we had a food vendor? Could we do that? I'm just, this is just throwing it out there as an idea, just so that it can be covered.
That's gonna have to go through the board of health first.
Okay, so we could just contact them and like if we had a vendor that was a food truck, say, we could send them up to the board of health and they could straighten out whatever they need to do to be out here for the day?
Right.
Or whatever.
You'd have to start with them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool. So this is what we will be adding.
April 2nd.
As we get to this flyer. I think that's it. Yeah.
You're gonna add this information to the flyer?
Yeah, so tomorrow we're gonna have our meeting. This is just our proposed, like one that was done after last meeting that we haven't had a meeting about, because we're waiting for you to agree and then we're gonna discuss it and make the final changes. But this is the beginning of it. It's kind of like the brainstorm before we like finalize it.
Well, the Great Hall goes to the town clerk, doesn't it? She would make his assignments clearly.
Yep, so we would make sure. We're looking for April 2nd, so that it's designed to be prior to Easter, prior to Mother's Day. So maybe some of the things that could be sold could be things that people could buy for those holidays. And also prior to Earth Day and Cleanup Day for us, so that we can get more people to help us clean up around town.
That wouldn't interfere with the historical flowers sale, would it?
I need to make sure of that.
Yeah.
I can check the calendar. She hasn't put anything in right yet.
Okay.
But a lot of times they kind of coordinate that together. I know the front steps, that's what they use for flowers. But then again, you could have people that are getting flowers and also that would go upstairs in reverse. So it could help each other out.
Yeah.
And that's, we've done that a couple of times if that has happened. So again, I know it's in the front steps, but maybe they could use the side. Who knows, but you guys can figure that out.
Yeah.
If she hasn't approached yet, usually she does that right before Mother's Day. Mother's Day is in May. I think she doesn't like the weekend because, oh, Mother's Day?
That's usually right.
Yeah.
Okay, so usually she's talking about the day? Oh, doesn't she usually do the day before Mother's Day? That family, the Mother's Day is the next day, I think.
As far as setting up the front steps, we need everything off to the side. We usually just spread out all the flowers on the front porch. But we.
Well, she's, she's talking about April 2nd. So that wouldn't interfere at all.
I think this is in May, so I have to be.
It's in May, yeah.
So.
Awesome. But if something, I like your idea on that, like the more than area, if we could group together and get more people, then that's our goal. Because we'd like to get everybody in town to pick up at least, you know, a bag of trash. Doesn't have to be somebody who we're doing it, but if everybody in town picked up, you know, might be a lot. Okay?
So a motion in support of April 2nd for the Beautification Spring Vendor Fair?
I'm up to support it as long as there's nothing else going on and they run the food trucks by the board of health first.
So the condition, the food trucks go through?
Yes, with you down, town clerk makes the schedule up there.
Would I, we have the allowance that if it wasn't available that day to pick another day and just notify you or do you want us to?
You wouldn't have to cut, well, we'd have to vote again, but just let us know if there's a conflict. You don't have to come back in. We'll be in support of it, I think.
Okay.
Troy seconded?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome. You guys can have that stock for your records.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks.
Five minutes, Chair.
All right.
All right, I'm gonna go with the warrants and commitments.
Yeah, real quick.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 73 for $391,502.67. Vendor warrant number 74 for $381,239.78. And withholding warrant number 75 for $131,013.38.
Second.
All of them?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And then I move to affirm an ambulance commitment from 2/7 to 2/13/22 for $45,210.1 cent.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And I move to approve vendor warrant number 76 for $88,717.41.
Second.
I don't know what's in that.
All those in favor, aye?
I abstain.
And then, let's see, I move to approve the following selectmen bills. Legal ad, express newspapers for $45. Town hall electricity for $1,682.70.
All those second for those.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous?
That is all I have.
Okay.
Town administrator report?
Well, we could take Jerry early.
Ready?
You good with that?
Sure. Yep. Give me more time, I'll tell you what I got here. Scott give an hour.
Oh, thank you.
Get some notes, it's gonna go a while.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I should have brought one for you.
That's all right, that's all right.
I declare one thing. I am not the chairman of the solar farm committee, Alan Linkleris.
Okay.
I volunteered to write the RFP. So what we don't know, just for the, we've looked at a lot of things in town to do solar panels and what have you. The biggest asset that the town has is the landfill. And I think that's where the most money that the town gets with little, little effort. There's a couple of things to do here. In the proposal on one of these, on this sheet here, I'm gonna give you some numbers and why we think the landfill is probably the best to do. There's two options that we can do. That gave some information on the company. It's power options, solar, it's power options that Pembroke did. And Pembroke did a 3.2 megawatt system. We're looking for at least 1 megawatt or more, depending on what they can fit on the, on the site. And the power options, it's a nonprofit. And they'll come out and they'll survey what you have. And then you, they'll give you a price, tell you what's going on. You join their company. And they've already got PPA agreements. They've got everything set up and here's what you're gonna get. They have contractors. It's kind of simple. On the notes, it's no capital cost, no responsibilities, pre-negotiated PPA. It's a fixed rate locked in for 20 years per year of power. And Pembroke, like they say on here, is they're the 3-megawatt landfill. They work it 20 years, the town's, it's good for 20 years. And they made $5,788,439. Halifax, if we do 1 megawatt, and just quick math, we're 30. So we'll wind up doing $1,734,000 over 20 years. But the average would be about $87,000 a year. And again, not accounting, that's just dividing it into. What I'm looking to do, what I like to do, is do at least own. And if we do at least own, again, it's no capital cost. I say for the first eight years. There's no responsibility for the first eight years. They'll come in, they'll do it, they'll own it, they'll operate it. We'll negotiate a PPA. The plant, for me, the life of a solar farm is 30 years. I never, everyone says 20, but it's really 30. That's what the panels are good for and that's what they should do. They degrade a little bit in power, but for the most part, they're good. Cost of the plant. Just to de-say it again, it's just back in the envelope figures. In 2020, if you go online, I did, the US average open field, that's like we have in registered, the end ones, the cost goes from anywhere from $0.83 to $1.39. Landfill cost is gonna be more, mainly for the, the way you have to, you have to have a ballot system, you can't penetrate the cap. So the mounting are a lot different. Back of the envelope. What I did, I took the high number, which is $1.39, and I times 2, because I'm just gonna say landfills can cost more. And if we do a megawatt, this, these are prices are all in per watt.
Okay.
Okay? So I'm looking at the cost of $2,780,000 to install a solar farm. And that could go up or down. But these are just back in the envelope numbers. If we, once you go over 500 KW, you have to put a battery storage system in. That's the new rules.
Okay.
That's gonna cost roughly about a million dollars to do that. So you add that to it, so I'm looking at a cost of $3,870,000. Now, the town receives, going back to the start number, $86,000 a year for the first eight years. We take that as a guideline. Typical payback, and this is all again, numbers that are on the internet, is eight years. So we took the $3,780,000 divided by 8. It's $472,000 a year that a company receives somehow in revenue. And again, accounting measures can go all different ways. But that's what the town should generate, that kind of a number.
Okay.
If you own it. All right? So in the RFP, I put in there that we have an option to buy the field after eight years. So I'm saying, all right, they've already got their money back. Now, what can we buy the field for? I'm saying we're gonna buy it for $2,500,000. They've already got their money back. They're gonna get $2,500,000 right away, so it gives them the deal. We'd have to see what that does though. Now, the town would have to pay off if we did an eight-year deal. If we did it for eight years and we paid $400,000 a year, it's $3,200,000. So at the end of 16 years, we now own the system. But we're still getting roughly about $72,000 a year in revenue. So it's not a, a complete loss. You're still getting money forward. So year 17 to 30, if the town receives $472,000, at the end of 30 years, we'll make $6,142,000. As far as maintenance, I know that's always a question. The batteries have to be replaced every 10 years. That's because of all the discharges and they're gonna put about 10 years on it. So if we replace the batteries, try to replace it the year 10, the year 20, and then post 30 again, and I'm saying it's gonna cost $500,000 to replace the batteries. So we have a two-year time for it. It's a million bucks. Maintenance and repair cost. There was a company that presented to the town in 2014 about owning the system. And one of their line items was capital cost and maintenance along with insurance. And they only carried a number of $7,500 a year. I'm carrying $30,000. So let me explain what happens. On a solar field, nothing moves. You have a solar panel. You have an embers that takes the water, the power that the panel produces and it ups the voltage. So the 12-volt, you can up to 1.2 or whatever you want to do with it. And then you have the power, just the panel. So there's very few parts. And there's a reason why everyone is throwing these solar fields everywhere. Because it's a money-making machine. The maintenance on it, you might have to clean them every now and then. All these fields, even some of the meetings I've sat down, they send a guy out once a month, drive around, see what's going on. There's a control system that'll tell you whether a panel's no good or something's not producing properly, and you go out and fix it. So I don't see a big maintenance cost on this here. It's just, it's just about there. And I think if you check it, anyone that's used to have panels in the roof, they've had them for so far, what, 10, 15 years? They've had no problems. And these fields, there's no problems. Could you have a 100-year storm, tornado come through here? Yeah, you got a problem. Because that's where insurance can come in. So you've got a couple of ideas to go into it. But I think if we don't do anything on that site, we're missing an opportunity. Whether you just say, I want the stress fee, free one, and we're just gonna get $80,000 a year, and cheap electricity. You walk in a low price.
Okay.
That's, that's a simple way to do it. I'm sure Pembroke is happy with it. And you can do nothing, or you can say, all right, I think the town should own this year and we should replace, replace the panels after 30 years and start making money again. It just keeps on rolling. It's just a, it's just a way of presenting it. I just, I just think that if we don't do anything, we're missing the boat. And you're just gonna say, why haven't we done this before? In 2014, it was great, but then the S-REPS, they ran out. Right now, we have a smart program and that is filling up fast. There's gonna have, there'll be something else going on. Because the state has already said that we're supposed to have 50% reduction in oil and gas, you know, it's going electric. Where are you gonna get the power? They're not building power plants, so it's gonna be a lot more civil. It'll be open up, it'll be all more. And electric costs are gonna go up.
Is there any thought as to wind power?
Just give me wind power?
Yeah.
We really didn't, you know, we really didn't give that a thought at all as to whether that would be good for that location. Yeah. It would be a little bit tough because you can't.
You can't go down, you can't throw down.
So you're really gonna get out deep and all of that. And I don't know how deep that landfill is, but I mean, you're probably gonna go down really deep to solid foundation.
And you saw what happened in Kingston when I put that.
Yeah, I'm taking it down.
Yeah.
That rascal's coming down.
Exactly, yeah. In the RFP, and then like the seventh page, because everything's gone electronic, it's got the bidding process. I have to sit down with Caesar and come up whatever the program is. There are dates in there that I have for May. It doesn't mean that we have to do May. I want everyone to look at this year and make the town council as well. We'll get it to them, make sure I, I've dotted all the Is and the Ts. The other thing we have to do, whether you do it with this other program or you do it with this here, on this other page, there's a lot of things that have to happen. I mean, we can review the RFP, make any change you want. Maybe it's easier to establish a web, but it's webbed over the RFP. Download the RFP to the website. We need to get, last time we looked, it was back probably 2018. The town pays about $270,000 a year for electricity combined. The reason we wanted to do this here is we want, we were looking to have the town never pay electric bill again. That was our intent of doing a landfill site. We would have to get 12 months of the, the bills that would have to be downloaded to the site. We'd have to get copies of the capping of the landfill. That would have to be on the site. I know we have an engineering firm that checks it once a year. The reports would have to go on the site.
Okay.
What else we have? Oh, it's a big one. This is an active site. We have a hobby department up there.
Yeah.
I have to tell Steve Hayward and just say, okay, this company's gonna want to lay down area. They're gonna have trailers up there. We're gonna have to look for parking for cars.
Yeah.
So there's a lot, and it's a working site. So we would have to come up with, okay, this site could be good for them. And this would all have to be known ahead of time. So when we have a site visit or a meeting, they can find out and that goes behind their bidding process. So that, that's a big deal idea. And get ahold of, whatever our rep is from the National Grid is full of know, but we are intending to go for a landfill site. The problem right now is that the smart program is already, National Grid has already been up to, I think, block nine, which is 100%. And I think 10, 11 are a waiting list. Landfills have a priority. So if you get it in, we might be able to bypass some of the people that are already on the waiting list. But it's, I, I don't know where it is right now, because it's just.
Well, I remember the last, I think it was my first year on the board when you were, you were trying to get the RFP out. Do you have anything for removal?
In the RFP, there's a cost factor in it that it has, they have to come up with a number. And it's pretty standard. I mean, this, this, right now, solar farms are, they're pretty standard. They're duffing dry. There's not much to do with them. They're, even the money that's coming out of them, they're pretty well set. Whatever you put out, I don't think any of the bidders are gonna be that much of a difference with a price. You're gonna get what's, what's there. I think you even see when you're PPEs that you have something. There's nothing, nothing strange. You're not gonna get people money. You're not gonna, you know, squeeze anything else out of them.
Okay.
Going back to 2014, it was new. The SREC was a beautiful program and everybody wanted it. I think one of the towns that made out the best was Mansfield. They had a lot of IRFPs and everything. They were getting, I think, $58,000 for leasing the land. And I think what they got for their, their unit cost to pay electricity, there was a ton of it that was there. So I mean, they did a great job. But it's changed. Everybody knows what the numbers are. The only thing on these numbers here is this is all 220.
So you're two years behind already?
It's two years behind, but we've got inflation and we've got all kinds of storage, you know, containers that are not, nothing's coming through. So that could absolutely have another problem here.
Okay.
But I think it's, I'm just trying to get this out again. Fortunately, it reached out to me and let's see if we can get something done here.
So what happens at the end of 30 years? Your plan is that we?
At the end of 30 years, I'm saying, okay, now, the panels, by then, will probably produce some 400 watts apiece. So we could probably double the size that we have out there. I'll put less panels in.
What's the cost to do that?
I'm just saying, keep it going.
He's saying, once you have the infrastructure. Well, you'd have to remove it.
Yeah.
And what's the cost to do that?
That is a figure that we have in there, because after 30 years, like your contract, actually, I think in here is 20 years. After 20 years, the contract is over and whoever installs it has to take it out. It's their responsibility.
So we would have to go and do another contract with?
Yeah, I'm asking for a figure in there.
Okay.
To be carried into this year.
Gotcha.
And a lot of the stuff I put in this here, we know we have a cemetery over here.
Yeah.
I've asked for special fencing along that, most of it can be chain length, but along there, along the front. Because we want to do something of a blockage where the, it is an active site. We don't want a lot of dust, anything else blowing on everything in there. So a better fence in the front part of it, too. Trying to think what else I throw in there. Most of it's pretty much, fire department will have to go up there and make sure they understand everything that's going on up there. They have to get, you know, our building departments will know about it. And I think, you know, Scott Materna's great. I think you should be under the building department itself to manage it. Part of it is the control system. The control system that goes in there is important to have. And you can have a, you can have a computer anywhere. You can look it up at home. You can have the, the numbers put right on the website and you can see how much power that's going. But there's also, you know, a lot of backside at work. Who's ever responsible can be looking at it. If it's not producing what it should be producing, it's gonna tell you that. Section 123 is not producing what it should be.
So for the first eight years, the company is going to do all that? All that makes sense?
And that's why I say the first eight years, that gives, or you can make it five. But that gives whoever the town is that's looking at it a good feel of what's, what's going on up there.
But if we decided to take it over, we would need, it would almost be another position. We would need somebody who would be in charge of that.
I don't think it'd be a position separate. I think it could be something else that someone can look at. You don't need someone 24 hours a day looking at this here or during the week. It's all doing it on the computer. You can have it where the control system that you're gonna have in there, it can set a alarm off that this is not working, something not working, which would require someone to go out and take a look at it. Yeah.
But it would be our people looking at it, not?
I would say, I would say our people, yeah. Or you could, you could have someone else manage it.
Well, it's not much different than having the water department with you, have somebody go inspect the well.
Exactly, same thing, yeah. I mean, this here gives you time to think of all these things, to see how it operates. If there's something that's wrong, if you don't like, then you can either say, no, we're not gonna take it over. We're just gonna continue the way it is. That's, that's totally up to the, to the town. You can see it. But I think having, having those options in there, and you know, after five years, you wanna buy it out and it looks proper for you, you can do that, then hey, you do it.
Okay.
But there's, you know, there's a reason why companies do it. I mean, I was in business and if I, if I had thought about solar, I would have bought land and everything else, because it really is a no-brainer. It's a cash cow. It is. But take it over.
Okay.
There's a lot to read and everything else.
Thank you for all this.
And see what you have, you know?
Thank you, Chair. Okay. Oh, Amy? You had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, oh, I wanted to ask about hazardous waste status, because right now, in all the education classes, they're saying 20 years. So even if we put it out to 30 and it's at a lower stage, if we, if it is a hazardous waste, even when we're repairing some of the panels, what's that gonna cost us? And also, like, what are we gonna do or what are our kids gonna do in 30 years when, or 20 years, when we have a hazardous waste field? And how much is that gonna cost us? Because we're not really making that much money if you start adding up, adding up all of the costs and then we don't even know about maintenance costs or insurance costs and it's, there's a lot of battery cost, what they're gonna cost if they cost $500,000 now.
We got an appointment at 4:45.
You know? We, we, we don't know how much a battery is gonna cost in 10 years, especially with shortages and issues.
Well, I would assume that the batteries are gonna go down in price. Because every battery, everything you, everything you see right now, every car is gonna have a battery.
But we have shortages on it right now.
So.
They're resolving that. That'll be resolved. There wouldn't be going, you wouldn't take every kind of manufacturer in the world to go with a battery system if they don't have a solution in mind. Because that would be total disaster for them. They've all said that they're not gonna reproduce anymore internal combustion engines in 2025, 2030. If they're saying that, their mouths will cut their throat because there's no batteries. It's not gonna work. They will, technology will make this here happen and they know it is.
So why don't we put this on the agenda for the next meeting to take review, if everyone has time to review, and then we'll?
Yeah, whatever, you know, take as much time as you want to make sure you, you know, I guess, read through it. If you see something that's wrong, it's, it's easy to correct.
Okay.
It's not a problem. And I said the dates don't mean anything, but like everything, the sooner we do it, the better it is.
Okay.
And I have no problem helping the meeting to, when the bidders come in to look at it.
Okay.
Done in the past, so it's not a big deal.
Thank you. So we have an appointment at 4:45 with the Halifax. So we have an appointment at 4:45 with the Halifax Fireworks Committee.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
How's it going?
We just wanted to get your feedback on us planning the fireworks on the 25th of June this year. Um, we've spoken to the fire chief and Board of Golf, as they've both said, as far as they're concerned, it was fun.
You guys have done such a good job in the past, why should we doubt the future?
We just wanted to make sure that it was a, it was a good day to fire a COVID. We didn't wanna overstep and make all of our plans and contact all of the vendors or potential vendors and then find out that we would have to.
Yeah, it was, we worked on you guys, so we were worried about you. So it was figured it was the furthest we'd come to you.
Okay. Board have any feedback?
We would have gone with the second, but the fireworks company is full.
Okay.
So that would have been the preferred date, but not available.
We'll take any date at this point to get the fireworks going again. And I think the town is eagerly awaiting.
Well, and we need money though. We need money. Yes, we have money to carry over. Um, that's gonna come with a deposit and a little bit more, but it's definitely, as the price of fireworks have gone up.
Yeah.
As far as the COVID is concerned, it's up to the individual to wear a mask.
Yeah, exactly. And it's outdoors, so we're not gonna do, just gonna be strictly the fireworks. We'll be, as of, um, two years ago, we did the jumping house. We did the cornhole boys. And I think I'm just strictly gonna be the fireworks. And we probably will still have the DJ.
Okay.
Because he's already volunteered.
I had a fundraising idea. I don't know if you guys were told it. So the, so the fundraising idea is to basically have two, two spots. You get a special pass for a car and you get to pick out a spot on the field, whether you wanna be close in the air. We get the Halifax blankets from the Historic Society. I think there's still a couple around. So if we had those, the person goes, picks up the spot, you cone it off. Everyone knows that that's the person that won the raffle. And you raffle off, you know, 100 tickets at $50 apiece and you fundraise that way. Because if the offices know that you've got the ticket, you're driving up, you get a special parking spot, you get in here at the, when you want at the end and you get out first.
Oh, the out first is a big one. You might be able to sell tickets on this.
I'm concerned with the, I would rather avoid the playground parking lot because that's where the food vendors are.
Wherever, whatever the, the parking.
Only because the year I did this, the kids and cars being parked there. I was just as a volunteer there.
Yeah.
This was crazy. So when we did it two years ago, I'm like, no cars, because the kids played on it's dark and the food vendors are there.
Or even if we use the, the parent pickup area.
I was gonna say.
Still that way and they can still walk out.
Wherever you think the correct area is for the, but I think if you had like the access to be like, you won, you won the raffle, you got to, you get a special parking spot, you get out of there fast. So you get to go home.
Was that a bite to be fair?
Did you think somebody paid for the all of them?
Yep.
Yes.
I would. Count us in.
Do you, do you know how many people have like four or five kids they're trying to wrangle to get out of their house? To walk up, to walk back? I, I just think it would be a cool, I mean, especially getting to pick your own spot on the field and have it coned off to be like, this is the winner of the raffle. This is what supports all these fireworks and make it into a big deal.
Oh, great big.
Or what if it's not even a raffle? What if you can box off a certain number of those? And it's like however many spots and sell the parking spots. And after, and then they're guaranteed the spot.
Is, there's three of us.
I mean, I, I.
You're gonna have a pretty large search team to help you this year.
No, I mean, the, before the day of the fireworks.
I.
Yeah.
To do all the fundraising and stuff, that's my concern.
We'll make sure you have.
Well, I, I was just thinking that like, I know how hard it is to put on an event and all the planning that goes into having the event to do fundraisers. And if you could just raffle off tickets for $50 each to have that spot, you've, you've, because all the volunteers, basically, I know that my time is very short with all the different things that I'm in. So if it's a $50 commitment versus four hours for an event, I'm gonna give you the $50.
Another thing that I had brought up, I think I brought it up with you when we were doing the, the test kit, is where, where I grew up, we used to do these like keychain things where you would go to the local businesses and have them do like a coupon, like $2 off for pizza or whatever. And you can sell the, the thing for like $25 a book or something. And it helps support the local businesses and you sell the books.
Yeah.
So I thought maybe that would be kinda cool to look into.
Yeah, and schools have done it.
Yeah, a lot of the schools where I, when I grew up, we, we did that too. A long, long time ago. Long time ago, Troy, a long, long time ago. But I'm sure there's even cooler ways to do it now or like little Q codes you can put on your phone and get really tech savvy, but.
How, how much money do you need to raise?
So right now there's over $8,000 in the account. And I'm gonna tell you about a lot of that. A lot of that came from our simple craft fair that we had. And my uncle went the night, my uncle who's, I don't even know how old he is. The night of the fireworks, went up and down that field with bucket. Because he, and he's not even a resident of Halifax. And just thinks it's a good thing to have because it's just a good community, so.
Can we charge for parking?
We did that before, or they did charge for parking when it used to be down in the Dell's field one year.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been going to these fireworks, it's probably been a few years. And it's been in different locations. Um, they used to charge $5 a carload at the Dell's. I don't know how you would do a lot of town property. It's a town event. How do you charge for parking?
Yeah, I don't.
People gonna be like, I pay taxes. You can't charge me parking.
I know, but a lot of people who come here don't live here.
I am not disagreeing with, but I'm having a funny feeling that we'd come back.
I, I, I think.
Just like you can't go recycling center unless you're a resident, you know what I mean? One of those things like.
Unless it's just certain parking lots. I mean, people can park farther away and not pay. If you wanna park closer, then you pay to park.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know.
And the Marshfield Fairgrounds, they charge for the Marshfield Fair. You park at the fire station across the street, you pay like 20 bucks a car.
I don't know the legal implications on this. I wouldn't, I've never thought of it because I didn't wanna get into it. But. So it is doable. I'm gonna, the deposit's gonna be due next month. Um, I was hoping to date it, or maybe we can get a very small event, starting at $7,000. So yes, we have the money for the event right now, but they'll also have details. Um, yes, there's money set aside for that, for town meeting. But, um, you know, you might get tenants and people like, oh, it was awful. And I, you know, Halifax did an awful job. You hear them criticize other towns. So I don't wanna be that town, so that's why I try to get more money.
Okay.
Well, if the committee takes up the raffle ticket idea, I'll help someone.
And then carry money over for the following year, whoever is on the committee. You don't wanna start at zero. So that's another reason why to go in with a bumper, because that deposit is only due March, April.
Okay.
So you never wanna go into the following year with zero in the account for that reason as well, so.
I think it's a great idea. Whatever we can do to help, whatever we can do to help fundraise, if you need us to be there to cone stuff off, help with parking, whatever we can help, I, whatever we can do.
Yeah, the day on is only kind of crazy, just getting, well, highway actually is good fire.
You got it in there, right?
Yeah. With highway, so.
Well, your, your time and effort is appreciated.
Thank you.
And I've been to every one of the fireworks.
For how long?
Over 25 years.
They get better and better, right?
The first one was the best.
Oh, we did lose, because just.
It only lasted five minutes, but it was the best.
Our person who did a large contribution was John the Firework. They can no longer participate, so. And that was always a large chunk of.
Right, they did the golf tournament or something.
Yeah, and that was a good, they did a lot of, it's a lot of work to do that golf tournament. And without, no, whatever, I don't know the reasons, I'm just, they can't do it anymore.
Okay.
But we appreciate their time that they have done it. Not bad.
Do you wanna vote on it or do we not need to?
I don't, I don't know that we need to vote, we just say thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Okay.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Thanks.
You have a better one.
Okay, we got five minutes. Do you wanna jump into your report?
Well, just a couple of items. Number one, the, I'll be right. The ethics training, um, was a great success. About 100 people attended both, uh, on a total of 100 people attended both meetings. About 50 at each one, either in person or via Zoom. So, um, I think if we wanna put on another training program on something else, I think boards and commissions and employees, you know, are very supportive of that, so.
I spoke to Jack, we were talking about doing an open meeting one.
Pardon?
An open meeting training.
Right.
So I think that will hopefully.
Yeah, that's on our to-do list.
The next one, yeah.
And then while we're talking about projects, we're moving forward on pond treatments
Okay.
for the summer. I talked to the chairman about.
Summer or spring?
Pardon?
Summer or spring?
Pardon?
Are we doing it in the summer or spring? Because summer is, the growth is.
Well, as soon as the consultant solitude thinks it's appropriate. Now, we're working on two, um, two permits right now for both ponds. And so we should be doing that. And then when we're ready to go, then, you know, I'll be meeting with solitude about the kinds of treatments, whether it be alum on one pond and, and farnwort on another or alum on both. You know, it just depends on the, uh, on the condition of the ponds. In fact, while we're talking about ponds, a meeting Thursday morning with a comprehensive environmental incorporated CEI. And they did a ton of stuff for us in Pembroke. And so I reached out to them and they're gonna have a couple of reps come by and visit. And I'm gonna talk about what, you know, what pond conditions we have and, and how, uh, and of course, they're certainly aware of the 1964 legislation about, you know, Brockton controlling water rights in several towns. And so, uh, so anyway, we're kinda moving forward on that. So we'd be ready to treat the ponds when, when we're ready to, to go. And, you know, we'll be in conversations, obviously with Brockton and, you know, and other entities that are involved, like the Central Plymouth County Water District and all that stuff, so.
Don Barrow, Barrow, he's gonna be in the next meeting to talk with us about some of the pond.
Okay.
Stuff from the watershed.
He contacted the, um, the reneal, so I am scheduled to come in.
Okay, good.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Five o'clock now. Uh, so we have a hearing for the transfer of the alcohol beverage. So I'm gonna read the notice. I'm in the green folder, that's why. Thank you, Troy. Okay. Uh, notice of a public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022, at 5:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Mass for the purpose of the transfer of all alcoholic beverage license, uh, restaurant license from Lily Cafe to Inc., DBA Happy Dragon Restaurant to Dragon Lake Village Inc., DBA Happy Dragon Restaurant. Cecile Yusso, license holder and manager on property located at 327 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. We did get a response, Pam, that's in. Is that in the blue folder or the?
What do we ask if you may have received?
It's on Thursday. Okay, so Gordon, as of Thursday 218, the applicant did not have the commitment letter from their bank. We received an email from the seller's attorney that he felt that it'd be premature to transfer the licenses at this time. We contacted the AVCC, asking what the board does in a situation like this. They said the board could table the application until the letter of commitment or the transaction takes place.
Okay.
So I would motion to table this.
Okay. Ha- has the transfer happened as of yet? Ha- have you purchased the restaurant yet?
Uh, I'm already signed a sales agreement.
He signed the purchase and sale agreement, but it hasn't, it hasn't gone through yet. You're just in the first phase of it.
Because I need to waiting for the ban.
Right.
And also before then, uh, the both is working together. The ban is to make sure, and the sales agreement is to make sure the legalizing can be transferred, can be myself, the, the, the sales can be go through to closing and whole, whole project. Just, uh, then I need to both is together, working together. I need to go for all the document, go for the ban and they working on. And I try to put in the, the heating for the, the legalizing, because you need to wait for this day. After the heating, there's still the time for this day. So if not, we'll be the ban closing day and the legalizing not transferred. The owner say, no, I can't let you win the business, the legalizing under their land. So there's working.
Do you have a closing date?
And March 8.
March 8?
Yeah.
Have you, have you approached your bank yet? Have you got a letter of commitment from your bank?
They waiting on, mostly they promised me is two weeks ago, they will be send it to me. But they check, beginning they just say, take my one business. Completely, the, the, a check, um, proof my loan. They open my, uh, back or say, oh, you one, 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 I need. They, they, they totally take my, all the business. Need to call my business to go through the loan to completely. So my accounting is need to more time, to more time, to more time, to work. They should take them over two weeks. So, but right now almost my accounting, all the information sent it to the banker. So they will take one or two weeks for that.
Okay. So our, our next regular scheduled meeting is March 8th. So we can, we can vote to table it until March 8th.
If you don't mind, I don't mind, I can stop by one more time. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's been moved?
Yep.
It's been seconded?
Second.
Okay, we'll table the public hearing until March 8th.
Good luck.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, hold on, uh, it needs to be at a certain time as well. 5:00 PM?
I'd, I'd say five.
Perfect.
5:00 PM? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, yeah, thanks.
Do we have to close the hearing?
Uh, we just table.
We tabled it, we don't get anything with it? Cool.
Okay, so then, next on the agenda. So we had a request from the Cook family to meet with the Board of Selectmen to discuss, um, property. Property that was taken and property that is owned by the Cook family. And Pam and Pam Medusi went through, um, and reviewed a lot of the records. So I, I guess I would have the board respond back to the Cooks and have them make a request with the, with the town collector and treasurer to go through which properties they think they have title to and which properties that they are currently paying taxes on. And which process they feel, um, that they should be able to, I, I guess, uh, present whatever documents that they have about the lots and how they still have title to them if the town took them. So I, I would ask the board to support that in a motion, have, send back a letter, ask the Cook family to work with it.
I move that. That way we have all the proper information and if it gets to the point where we come here and discuss, that way we know what we're discussing.
So, agree.
Sir, a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So then, so we have a request for a special municipal employee for the Board of Health.
I think where we just had the ethics training. We, I'm not saying no to this, I just wanna take the, what they're asking, what the two positions are and what the hours are. And maybe we should run that by council and make sure we have the authority to do that.
We have the authority.
So that we're not putting our foot in our mouth. That's just my opinion.
So did, did the employee get a determination from ethics?
I don't believe so. I think this is just the Board of Health letting us know that there is a situation that we have an employee working for two different departments.
So maybe we should have the employee reach out to state ethics and get a determination because they can provide a legal determination on what the employee needs to do.
Okay.
And then we can provide that documentation to legal counsel and then take a vote. That's what Detroit recommends is declaring a special municipal employee.
Okay.
But just to have that paperwork so it's followed up. I think it makes sense.
Yes.
It's been, it's been done before, it's not really a big depth process.
Well, where the employee works for two different elected boards.
But basically working for the town on both the boards.
Yeah.
It's just a town position split.
Okay.
It'd be different if she was working for a firm outside of this and coming in that we do business, wasn't it coming in working in the office?
Okay. Okay, um, you have holidays in Halifax, we have a resignation from Stacy Ferrano. Could we send her a?
A thank you letter?
Yes, please. Okay, um.
Get the beer sides and liquor and cigarettes side, I'll look at for it.
So Troy is talking about the next item, which is discussion on advertisements at the baseball fields.
Okay. So it was brought to my attention that we don't advertise on baseball fields. Um, a lot of surrounding towns do. I think there's a good way to do it tactfully. I think it's a good way to support our local businesses by being able to advertise them at our games, especially with people coming from out of town. It also gives a lot of revenue to Little League and sports and to be able to maintain the fields and the things that they have to maintain that maybe, you know, just the cost of a player isn't covering anymore and not having to pull from the parents who have three, four, you know, sports going on or a kid in two sports a year. I think it would be a great idea to help the town and the kids and also promote the local businesses if we do it tactfully.
So you said no?
Actually, the reason we said no to it before was because the companies do serve alcohol beverages, things that needs to advertise. Because if you allow certain visitors coming to advertise, then anyone can come and advertise.
So is there a way to just vote not to support any?
How does that work though? So if one of the local restaurants in town wanna advertise, but they also have a bar because they serve a family and they're a family-friendly restaurant, but serves liquor, they shouldn't be able to advertise?
I, I don't think that's what we were saying.
Not a town problem.
What about this outside?
So.
I mean, a lot of other towns do it. So I guess there's gotta be a way to do it and a way to help support the town. Clearly, our budget isn't in a situation where we can start helping with these things. So to be creative and we have, um, people who run these leagues that are willing to help and take on the burden to do this, we should give them the opportunity to be able to bring the money into their sports.
It's just, um, just my opinion.
Okay, um.
I might come back with a report in two weeks at your May 8th, I mean your March 8th meeting, let you know what.
Yeah, can we look into what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do? If we can put restrictions on what the advertisements are, like Troy had said?
As you write, other towns have it, so.
There's gotta be a way to do it.
Regulations.
Okay, so.
So can we put that on the next agenda? And maybe we can look into a couple of the local towns, like, I think Hanson might do it, or I guess some towns around us do it, so we can maybe reach out and figure out how they do it.
So regulations. So Ed will look into regulations for advertisements at the sports fields?
Yes.
I think you reach out to the towns that already have it and see what they went through.
Right.
Okay, mhm. Okay, next is discussion on, on an article at town meeting to change the Board of Selectmen to a five-member board.
It was on the last town meeting.
So I, I put it forth as a private individual at the last town meeting to change it to a five-member board. I still feel that the Board of Selectmen and the town would be served better with a five-member board. Seems like there's a number of occasions where if both, if two of us, Troy and I, wanna go to a meeting, we didn't post it as a meeting, we can't both attend. It just seems like there's, with a larger board, there'd be overlap of information and knowledge as to what happens at other meetings and the ability to communicate, I think, and more than one person's take on what happens at a meeting.
Plus a lot of today, I mean, we live in a small town. We all have family who live here. We have things going on that maybe one of us shouldn't be discussing, somebody should recuse, all sorts of things going on. I don't think it hurts to have more of a voice, not to mention the amount of subcommittees, negotiations, things that were on. There are some weeks where I'm in a meeting every single night because we have a selectman meeting, because we have to be at a finance meeting, because I have two subcommittees, because we have negotiations at 3:00. I think to have two more members of a board would be great to have two more voices to be able to make sure that everybody's going by the code of ethics, recusing themselves when they should, that we're not pushing power of necessity anywhere, which isn't a great look either. So many reasons. I mean, Ed, you've worked with Pembroke, right? And they went to a five-member?
They went from three to five while I was there. If the board wouldn't mind, pardon my voice, um, for your meeting on March the 8th, the, I can bear, uh, compare and prepare a survey of towns on the South Shore, further west like the Bridgewater and whatever, about, um, their former government. Um, and, and how many people they have and what the population is. So, you know, you could, you could look at the argument as to whether or not we, Halifax is.
Large enough.
Too small or too big to have three to five.
Right.
So, Troy. This work will be the last 30 years. I can't speak to it. So if the board doesn't mind, like, sure, I'll just give you a little survey.
For the next meeting in.
On March the 8th.
Ed will get some stats. Okay.
Steve?
Hey, Tony.
How are you, sir?
I'm great, how are you?
Good. It's 5:15, we have an appointment with, uh, Mr. McVon from the Board of Health for the Massachusetts Health Board Trust Fund Agreement?
Yes, and the HP is what they call it. So basically, I'm gonna sum it up. We were granted $5,000 to help with the tracing, contact tracing, uh, you know, going out and finding out everything, sending, um, coordinating the, um, what you're called handing out, the, uh, the testing kits, all these that the nurse would do. Uh, we hired one nurse, um, she spoke the world, she would put a commitment, she would do that, she never followed up or anything. The board, uh, ended up choosing to terminate her eventually. So basically, the health agent took on this role, um, you know, where he did all the extra hours, he did all the contact tracing along with the, um, fire department admin. So where this isn't given by the town or anything, and it's not in our budget, it was granted for this specific purpose, we'd like to take out the funds and give part of it to the health agent and give a, a bonus, if you will, to the fire admin, both doing jobs outside of their job, uh, that was specifically supposed to be done by somebody else and.
Didn't work out?
No, uh, we just hired a lady who's, who were hoping, everyone comes in and the book's great, act's great and talks apart and is all excited, but it, when you get down to it, I mean, she didn't do her training, Candace, and I, I can't remember her last name, she don't know.
That's okay.
Great, great.
She's a nurse as well, and was offering to work, wasn't a particular nurse, like, we, we put our best foot forward to just make this all happen. And in the end, it was the health agent that made it all happen. You know, whether it be nice weekend or whatever, you know, he just had the best interest of the town.
Are there limitations on the funds that you have?
There, there is not. It is, it was used specifically for COVID tracing and like, you know, the fire hot and butter truck or whatever, you know, that kind of thing, was used, you know, for COVID. You know, um, we were hoping it was gonna be the nurse, but again, that just didn't happen. We've actually got, um, coming in from last year, we just had a number, um, $5,600 coming in for the 2021, uh, this is above what I spoke of, for the 2021 budget, and none of the 22, 2022 $7,000 has been spent yet. We actually just hired the nurse last week or two weeks ago. We voted on it.
I know it was a very short time because it was still advertised for it.
Yeah, we, two, we had two applicants, one never showed, uh, we followed up with her because she had a really good resume and everything and it, she just never showed. Um, we interviewed the other one, but we were trying to, you know, every thing's happened, like, so we were trying to give this other one an opportunity to come in and see it as well, so we could, you know, have, you know, two people to interview. It's just one excuse after another, basically.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Um, hopefully the one we did find.
So what you wanna do is to use $7,000?
No, 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 no. That's, we're just gonna use, because that's a nursing budgets. Uh, we, we don't wanna touch that. This is simply a, I don't wanna use the word award, a grant, if you will, given to just a water house, um, for specifically for that. So, um, basically, if we don't use it, it doesn't go anywhere. It can't go in a town budget or anything, it just kinda sits there, uh, forever and a day. So the exact amount that we were looking to give, you know, it's a lot easier to keep track and read this stuff when you're, uh, $41.54 to the agent and $500 to the fire department admin to be utilized.
That's a one-time?
One, yeah, it's just for, I mean, you know, for this specific reason, it's a one-time thing, it's because the, again, the money was supposed to go to somebody to do this job, that person, people, however you wanna word it, didn't work out. So we're just trying to give it to the person that spent all their time doing it.
What if, um, playing devil's advocate, what if you do want hiring somebody and the money's not there to pay them?
We, we have the budget. That was, uh, the 2020, we still have 21's budget, $5,600. In 2022, uh, we still have not spent, uh, the $7,000 budget, but the $5,600 from last year's budget is carried over.
I asked my question.
So, so this is a fund that the Board of Health is in charge of, correct?
We were, we were granted it. All, they give money to all the different boards of house, but yes, so.
So, so are you looking for a, a vote of, just, because I think these are your funds to spend as the board sees fit, so are you looking just?
Where, where, so.
Looking for support from them?
We believe in everybody working together in the town, as I know you do. Yes, you're right, could we just say, yeah, you can have it? Yes, we could. But we felt, the board felt, the right idea was to come and speak with the selectmen, um, you know, to see if there was any opposition, to see if we all agreed, or instead of just kinda doing it behind the back kind of situation, that's how we wanted to, to do it.
So, I don't, I don't need to make a.
I think it's fair, I think it's fair what you're trying to do, and trying to reward people for their efforts.
I saw how hard they worked, I mean, poor Bob.
Yeah, yeah.
There were days I saw him and he was like, he, he really, he did a great job. So I, if your board feels, um, that that's what you should do with it, I support your board, obviously. Um, and I always support Bob, I think the whole department did a phenomenal job during this time of nobody knowing anything and he made everyone seem like we did know, so it was good, he was, he gave us a secure feeling, so.
Thank you.
And then Kendra did a lot of work too in the fire department.
Yeah, which is why Bob felt that, um, you know, she should be awarded some as well.
Okay, so I don't know that we need to take an official vote, but thank you very much.
More like a discussion to kinda, you know, put everyone on the same page, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for FYI.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks for the good teamwork.
Okay, and, um.
Uh, we're at the bridge, I think.
The bridge?
Patrick.
And that's in this folder, correct it?
Yeah, agreement, you know.
Agreement?
Pam, it takes a lot of time to put this in order for you.
Oh, I'm flipping between the green and the blue.
It would be.
We still have Mr. Perry's next thing, so I'll pull that up next. Okay, so, so we have a permanent construction and maintenance easement agreement between the town and Mr. Derek Hodge.
I moved that the board would vote to allow the chair to sign the, the agreement.
I second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I want you to know that Pam and I are now experts on the Pond Street Bridge project.
That's good.
Are you gonna make the repairs too? No, sir, I don't have a million three.
Sorry, that, okay, and then I'm just gonna, I'll go write your signature tomorrow. And I think just, um.
Okay. Then next, we have the proposed revised fees for inspection services. Hello, Mr. Perry?
Good evening. So, uh, like the company said, we were looking into our fee structure. Uh, tried to find out when the last time the fees were adjusted. As far as we can tell, uh, nothing's been changed since 2011, with the building apartment fees. Uh, 2017 and 18, we did add a line item for solar panels, but none of the other fees were touched at that time. So, um, we looked at some of the other towns around, that's similar in size and, uh, took a look at what they were doing. And goes, uh, fees were a little on the low side and, uh, the building apartment fees are on the back, which are pretty much modest fees. You see the highlight, uh, to the right, which is the new fees versus the existing fees. Where the, uh, these are pretty close, where, where we found the biggest discrepancy in fees were with the inspectors. These inspectors, uh, contract this flow to town. So, you know, sometimes they're going out, uh, for a $50 fee, they might have to go three times for an inspection due to certain, uh, situations in the field or whatnot. So that's where a lot of the, the fee structure did get boosted up a little bit, to try to get those guys whole and, uh, to try to catch up with some of the other surrounding towns. So, uh, the board sets the fees for the building apartment in this town. So we ran by, obviously, the board to look for some call.
Comment from the board on the suggested fee table?
Well, if it puts us in, in competition with other towns, what they're doing is a compensationist process.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the new, uh, fee schedule as of March 1st, 2022?
So moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking into that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, up next, uh, we have the vote of the Council on Aging Grant, which we have here. The Council on Aging Director had given us an update on this at the last meeting. So is there a motion to have the chair sign the Council on Aging Grant?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
If I might, if I might say something?
Sure, darling.
No.
Oh, I don't know why we want, I'm, I'm printing off all this new paperwork that they just sent me today, referencing the. referencing the way they handled it this year. So they're going with a ten-year contract as opposed to the year, an annual contract. So that was one of the main points of change. I thought it was a mistake and I was hoping it was, but it wasn't. So the other thing, too, I was wondering where our census states that we have fifteen-hundred, they based it on the two thousand and ten census and, which actually is not, you know, accurate, two thousand and ten, but they said that next year it would be based on the two thousand and twenty, which would bring the numbers up to, you know, at least over two thousand. So I'm hoping had, you know, that we, you know, changed the funding. And, you know, I, I really, the information that they provided me today, I have copies, I just, that's what I was trying to do, is make all the copies for you. I just received it today from the financial officer, Rachel Goldstein, as well as the assistant secretary, Carol Malone. And it details the changes in the contract and why. So as I said, I just received it today, so I was making the copies for you to bring over.
Okay, so it's, so it says the annual award is determined by the number of elders per municipality as the most recent census data at a current rate of twelve dollars per person.
Which my concern was that they could change it because the governor's office. If the governor's office is, if Baker's not, no longer in office, does that change the contract, you know, from twelve to eight dollars? Could that happen? And they stated here in this information that it wouldn't do that, so.
Well, this looks like it would lock it in at twelve dollars per person.
I would think it'd have to go through the legislature.
Yep. So that was, you know, it's just a thought, you know? I didn't know if that would, would change, but it does state it, so that was a good thing. Also, let's see here.
The question is, if we don't sign this contract, what is that, what is that due to you? What do we do to turn you in?
Well, we wouldn't get the funding, so that's not a good thing. So even the money that we do receive, you know, I would think that, what is, what would you do for me or do to the DOA? You know, the re-contract and stuff. I mean, without that funding, I don't believe we can have the services we do have or the programs.
Troy moved it. Is there a second?
I seconded.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, all right, we'll sign it.
Thanks, Darlene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
I'll bring over that other information sheet to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, there's that signed.
Signed. Were you ever able to get the breakdown of the harbor where we're at?
Yes.
Can we print that first before we go into this next?
Yeah.
Breakdown of the expenses?
What we have left in the account. What's been spent, what's?
What do we have available at this moment?
Right.
So.
Sandy's on.
Yeah, I'm good.
She might have a laptop on her and maybe will tell you like an answer right now.
She sent me the spreadsheet. That's right. So we have, so so far.
Oh, you got it?
This one I got.
Thank you. Same thing that you have.
Looks like it.
The water proposals on there.
So you got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so we have a request to use opera funds to purchase an interactive display for meetings?
Yes. This is pretty much a follow-up from what we talked about last time.
Okay.
I know that, I gave you guys the spec sheets, I want to say, the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago of the display. And then in addition to that, I'd like to set, also get a secondary not interactive display to be used for overlap, for those meetings that are going to be occurring while this room or whatever board or public body is using the interactive display.
I, I think for right now, why don't we just go with the one present though, one?
So the total cost for that is, I'm trying to think. I wrote it down somewhere. I can tell you that both of them cost sixty-three, sixty-three hundred dollars roughly. And I want to say that the interact, the, the TV, five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, actually, because I calculated a thousand dollars for the TV.
What kind of TV are you getting?
Well, I'm sorry. The secondary display is a TV. The thousand dollars includes the TV, the rolling mount, the webcam, and then whatever accessories I'll need to lock them on. And then the five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars is to cover the interactive display, which is an eighty-six inch screen. And it's, it's interactive. You can touch it, come to the stylus, similar to the whiteboards at the schools. This will allow boards and committees to, you know, use it as a whiteboard or to bring up plans on the board and move them around, kind of moving towards our digitalization efforts, but also allowing us to have something that's on wheels that we don't need to have wired setups for, like higher meetings.
You're going to do training on this stuff?
Yeah, it'd be used for any, for any.
I mean, it's just not reasonable to say that you're going to be here for every meeting to help use this interactive display.
No, I wouldn't have.
And I don't want to spend money on something that committee members just don't want to deal with because it's technology and they don't want to learn it.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a very simple device. It, it's not, it's very, it's like an iPhone. That's the best way you can explain it. You have a, a screen with a bunch of icons, whiteboard, all the other apps that are on it. And it's, you just use it from there. And then that five thousand dollars does include a slot in PC, so we don't, we can get a, a slimmer rolling cart and fit it into various spaces without having like the one we have upstairs with the legs coming out. So the slot in PC is essentially a separate computer that goes with, inside the actual display. So we can have a Windows operating system also attached to it to do more of the complicated things that are based on Windows. And then that price also includes a webcam, too. So if it's not being used over a room that has AV equipment setup, it can still be used standalone, and it does have Wi-Fi capabilities. So you don't get a hard wire connection. It's also going to do a very good job of replacing the twenty-o绞 projector we have.
Like the one that you used in school and you could like write on it?
No, 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 that's an overhead. I'm talking about the actual projector, the one that you have to have like a mile away from the screen in order to show something in the great hall.
Yeah, the one I use for the school committee meetings. Is there a motion to approve fifty-four hundred dollars?
For both?
Just for one? For the one? What do you want to do, sixty-four hundred for the other TV?
If you should leave, God forbid, can anyone go in there and run the system?
I mean, it's, it's a standalone device. Anyone could operate it. I'd probably do training for the internal staff that would need to use it during the day. I'd be around, at least by phone, if I'm not here. But most part, once you, once you know how to turn the thing on and tap the screen, you're pretty good from there. There's nothing on my side that needs control or maintaining or monitoring or whatnot.
Can we use the opera funds for this purpose?
What is it? Yes. Can you use opera funds for this purpose? Is that, is that what you asked?
Yep.
Yes, you should be able to.
Should be and could.
It's related, it, it's related to COVID mainly because of the higher means. So I would say yes, depending on which amount you're taking it from.
I have no, no idea what COVID is. I can get you an answer, or, you know.
Let's table it to the eighth.
Right.
Let's table this one. Move the interactive.
Because I just want to be sure, would not use an opera phone in?
Yeah, and I'll talk to Caesar about this.
Okay. The same's going to be true then for the next one.
Right.
So table it because that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just saw.
So just get a response from, the, the only other thing to, to say is the police network is on that upgrade.
Okay.
We did already vote that.
Right.
What?
The police network upgrade for use with opera phones is on that spreadsheet. We did previously vote that. So do you want to check on that as well?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, network upgrade to the police station. Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
So that has gone up, but the, you look at the, the pricing here, the, the offer that I have for this ends in, like, in like the middle of March. And I don't want to wait too long to where it ends up costing us more money down the line to do something.
Why, why don't we just, we'll put all three items on the agenda for the eighth after Ed gets Troy's answer that he's moved. What's that?
Perfect.
Okay, and then?
So the second was for various departments, so police is separate from?
We, we did do a, so there was an issue that came before us to do an upgrade of the police network because of how segregated it was. So the board voted to approve that. But if you're going to look in to just double check, then we'll have you do that.
This is pretty much that same request, but off.
So did, did you present this to the capital plan as well?
No.
I was, no, because I didn't add it to my list of the other ones until I got a vote on this.
So I would present the whole thing for use for capital as well?
I, yes, I will do that. I'll have to do that.
I, I would put?
I would do that very quickly because we have a capital planning meeting on Thursday.
And I would put?
You're going to run out of time.
I would put in the request for the interactive display as well. So you've got everything covered. Because if the answer is no, you still want that for the town to move forward. So that could be a special warrant, it could be an article in the special town meeting warrant to get it ordered for this year with free cash.
I'll, I'll.
Undesignated funds.
I think that's, that's what we were going to, I think that's the amount we were using for.
Okay. Okay, so that concludes the open session. We now have, we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the sergeants, firefighter, highway, and mixed unit as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town for the first session. Second session, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto as the second.
And we'll adjourn from executive session?
And we will adjourn from executive session, not to return to the open.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ashley?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and it is five forty-three.